Good evening. I'm calling the Monday, September 28th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes? Entertaining a motion to approve the agenda?
I moved.
All right. Motion. Do I have a second to approve the agenda?
I will second that.
All those in favor approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, agenda is approved. Moving on, we have minutes from the meeting held on Monday, September 14th, 2020. Do I have any request for edits or concerns about the minutes? Seeing not entertaining a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
All right. Motion Commissioner Higgins, do I have a second? And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, moving on, we have three public hearings this evening. The first is a code amendment for gymnasiums. This request for amend City Code, Chapter 11 relating to gymnasiums. Julie, will you be leading this discussion?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I will be. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to share with the commission and the audience. So, a little background on this particular amendment. So, prior to 1982, gymnasiums were not listed as a permitted use in the industrial zoning district. At that time, the city did receive a request to amend the code to allow for gymnasiums in the industrial districts. Council directed staff to prepare an amendment and have it reviewed by the Planning Commission, which was done, and that is how gymnasiums are now listed as a permitted use as well as having parking requirements in the zoning ordinance. Because the use is listed, you know, as a permitted use, a gymnasium would be allowed to occupy 100% of the gross floor area of a building. Some of the issues that has caused staff, caused staff, excuse me, to take a look at this over time is that there's not a definition for gymnasium in the ordinance. And as we talked about two weeks ago when we were doing an overview of a variety of different code amendments that staff is working on, we were talking about the fact that because there's not a definition, it allows for a broad interpretation of what constitutes a gymnasium use in the industrial district. So, you can imagine since 1982, that's a lot of years. I'm not going to do the math in the moment. That's a lot of years. So, there's very likely been multiple interpretations that have been applied as to what business is a gymnasium and what is not. So, for instance, uses such as fitness studios, gymnastics studios, martial arts studios, those types of things have been permitted in the industrial district under the broad category of gymnasium. Those same uses may have been permitted in the commercial zoning district as a retail use. So, let's take a yoga studio, for instance. A yoga studio on Prairie Center Drive in the commercial zoning district is identified as a retail use, but if it locates somewhere in the GTA, let's say Washington Avenue, then it's defined as a gymnasium. So, you find yourself in a position where businesses are not receiving equitable and consistent information or opportunity within the zoning ordinance. So, one of the purposes of this amendment is to clean that up and provide for an equitable and definitive determination of what a gymnasium use is. So, without zoning compliance permits, it's difficult to determine over that long stretch of years which uses were maybe allowed under a retail interpretation or which may have been allowed under a gymnasium interpretation. Now, retail uses are allowed in the industrial districts. Retail uses are allowed to occupy 15% of a building's gross floor area. So, you can see the discrepancy there between being identified as a gymnasium versus a retail use. There's a difference there. So, because of changes in the economy, recent trends, aging buildings, we're seeing a lot more requests for repurposing or new uses in the industrial area. And quite frankly, you know, sometimes we get calls from folks who say, "Well, I've got this business. I'd like to locate on this property." And as at a staff level, we let them know, "Hey, that's a retail use. You'd be limited to 15% of the gross floor area of the building." And, you know, they'll take that information in, and sometimes they'll actually get back to us and say, "But what if you say I'm a gymnasium? I don't see anywhere where your code is defined defines what a gymnasium is. So, can you consider us that?" So, this amendment is really intended to clean up, as I said, and provide that equitable playing field. In the, as I said, the composition of uses in the golden triangle is likely to change just with the market trends and also the construction of the LRT and development of TOD in the area. So, as those changes occur, staff wants to continue to allow the flexibility and provide the opportunity for gymnasium type of uses because there is such a community value for those properties, or those types of uses, excuse me, but also to provide opportunity and preserve opportunity for significant employment in the manufacturing sector or industrial sector as well. So, the amendment that is proposed for the Planning Commission to consider this evening provides a definition for gymnasium. In essence, it is a building or space that has a clear ceiling height of 20 feet or more and provides facilities such as courts, turf fields, batting cages, gymnastics studios, swim schools for uses of recreation and physical training. Goes on to explain that uses such as fitness centers, martial art, yoga, dance are considered and allowed consistent with retail uses in these industrial zoning districts. And then to allow gymnasiums as a permitted use to occupy up to 50% of the gross floor area of a building. So, as a part of that, staff wanted to take a look at the existing properties in the industrial districts to see, okay, how would this amendment affect properties within the GTA and other industrial areas? So, we took a look, and in the golden triangle, there are 14 properties that have buildings that would qualify as a gymnasium use. At 50% of the floor area of those 14 parcels, nine of them meet the ceiling height and would allow for average gymnasium uses of 50,000 square feet or larger. So, staff also did some research to understand, you know, what are the market conditions that, you know, what's the kind of right size or maybe average size for gymnasium uses? Because a gymnasium use could be something as small as a couple of batting cages, or it could be something, you know, much more significant. So, through that research, we found that kind of the midpoint or the average was about 50,000 square feet. So, that's why this research was important to find out how many of those properties would meet that ceiling height and also provide at least 50,000 square feet of area available. And nine of those parcels did that. All of the other parcels would provide opportunity, smaller square footage opportunities up to that 50%, or 50,000 square feet, excuse me. So, as you can see in the last bullet point, the remaining seven parcels would still also allow for gymnasium uses, but at that smaller scale, less than the 50,000 square feet. There's a lot of numbers on that slide, so if you guys have questions, don't hesitate to ask. So, we also want to take a look at the impacts of the proposed amendment. And as I said, you know, it would continue to allow gymnasium uses but preserve employment opportunities in the manufacturing, production, warehouse, and office sectors. And I want to point out for the commission that by including the language that talks about a 50% floor area requirement, that if there was a use that came in that exceeded that 50% floor area, they would always have the opportunity to come in through the PUD process and request a waiver to exceed that 50% to go to 75% or 80%, whatever their number was. As commissioners, you can recall, we've entertained requests like that in a variety of different projects, whether that was to increase the retail area or the office area based on the specifics of a particular proposal. So, there would be that option as well, leaving that door open. Any legal non-conforming uses would be governed by the zoning ordinance and state statute, which allow those uses to maintain themselves, continue to operate, make improvements. The limitation is they cannot expand. So, it would not require that, you know, a business close or anything of that sort. They can continue to operate and continue to make improvements. There was business outreach to the property owners of properties that include known uses such as fitness centers and gymnastics studios, martial arts studios, those types of things that are subject to this amendment. Notification was sent to them, letting them know about the proposed amendment and the public hearing and provide education regarding legal non-conforming uses. Staff would, as I mentioned two weeks ago during the planner's report, if the amendment is approved, staff would expect to continue to work with property owners to do education and document mix of uses and square footage areas that are being used for what particular use in buildings so that there's a baseline or a database of information to establish, as I said, what types of uses are occurring in on those properties. Staff did receive communication that is included in your packet from Tags Gymnastics. Staff did take a look at that particular building, and based on the floor area of the building and the 50% proposed language, Tags would continue to be a permitted or a conforming use under the proposed language. And I believe the property owner is here tonight to listen and potentially speak during the public hearing.
Just a question. Can you repeat that so I understand? That with these proposed changes, the Tags building would be conforming or existing non-conforming use once these go into effect?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if the amendment is approved as it's presented with no changes, Tags would remain a conforming use, meaning they would be at that 50% of the gross floor area below. Based on our calculations, they currently occupy about 32% of the gross floor area of a building. So, they're not at that 50% level. Does that help?
Yes.
Just a follow-up, though, but with the, if the ordinance passes the way it's written right now, they would be limited to expanding only to the 50% limit, not beyond that?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is correct unless they pursued a PUD amendment to go beyond that 50%. Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I can have another question? The logic behind the 50% limit is to encourage or to protect manufacturing jobs in the golden triangle? Is that too blunt a way to say it, or is that why we put a 50%, why a 50% limit was proposed on the floor space?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think that's a good summary of what we're talking about as a part of this amendment. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, you know, the golden triangle is undergoing, the industrial areas in the city are undergoing changes as trends are different. In addition, with the LRT line going through, we are likely to see TOD development and repurposing of some of those properties as well, so a new mix of uses. So, we're not, as a community, likely to have the same broader acreage or square footage available for those in industrial uses. So, as we see those changes, we want to preserve the opportunity for employment in some of those other categories.
I understand, but I'm not sure I see that. Let me, I gotta think on that or listen to other questions perhaps. Thank you for the answer.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the city? Nothing for now. Is, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak in favor of kids? Please come forward now. Good evening. If you mind, would you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Julia Thompson. I'm the co-founder of Tags Gymnastics, which opened first in 1977 in our Burnsville location. And we first came to Eden Prairie, actually, in 1982 and leased space from numerous locations for almost 20 years prior to purchasing the building that we're currently in. And so, I recall there were some situations that allowed us to get into a lease space in '82. But we are currently at 10300 West 70th Street. And Greg Arts and I have owned that building since 2002. And we've been paying taxes for over 18 years on this building. The businesses that are tenants of our building employ approximately 75 to 100 people across a broad spectrum of wages out of this building. We have been able to operate this way successfully for 18 years in this location. All of the events of 2020, especially the pandemic, have made it challenging for us as building owners and for our tenants as they deal with the realities of decreased revenue and increased regulations, including social distancing. They typically have over 3,500 students and they have maybe 2,000 because they have to social distance to be able to meet the guidelines that the state has set forward. But they want to bring value to their customers and the ever-changing business landscape. Moving from 100% to 50% for a future tenant in our location could be incredibly challenging. And we appreciate your flexibility as you talk about percentages and how you could operate. And we're fortunate that we could meet these guidelines now, but we think that things can change in two and five and 10 years as far as usage for future tenants or future owners. As we all know, real estate is an incredibly capital-intensive venture, and with this building, we continue to invest in. We need the flexibility to be able to grow and operate the building in many ways that we know will maximize its value, not only for it as owners, but also for our tenants and our community who we see as partners. As with any business, it's all about a partnership, and our success is derived from the success of our partners. Since 2002, we have operated Tags Gymnastics out of this building and have had tenants that use the space as a fitness center. This use brings value to our building through the tenants we can attract who want to be located next to similar uses. We have operated with no issues and think uses like this can bring vibrancy to our building and neighborhood. With the coming light rail adjacent to our building, we feel that uses like ours provide a density of people, employment, and vibrancy and limiting the uses of this seems to counter to that goal. Right now, employment is a challenge for everyone and everywhere. Adding additional restrictions on types of employment we need to provide for add to this challenge now and possibly the future. Amending Chapter 11 to further restrict the future use and flexibility of our building diminishes our property rights and degrades the value of our building to us and future owners. We think the city should be looking for ways to allow property owners more flexibility of uses, especially in areas like ours that are in the midst of change due to the light rail station being constructed. We encourage further dialogue and explanation on the needs for this change to the city code. But I do appreciate your flexibility as you move forward with a proposal, whether it's 50% or maybe 75% or 80% or allowing us some flexibilities or future tenants or owners, flexibility as they see changes that they need to adapt to run their business. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Are all the tenants that you have in the building in what would be defined according to the, our new definition in a gymnastic industry or gymnastic business?
No, just the gymnast, just Tags Gymnastics.
So, the rest of your clients? I heard, I heard, I thought I heard you say that they were in the fitness, they were fitness-oriented businesses?
One is, yes. One is a fitness, but they don't qualify, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, in that same threshold?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in response to that question, the fitness studio that is in the Tags building exceeds the 15% retail threshold. So, that use may have gone in as a gymnasium use. It may have gone in as a retail use, you know, at whatever time it went in and potentially expanded. Sometimes that happens with businesses. They, you know, come in compliant with that 15% and over time, you know, just expand into additional square footage, you know, unbeknownst to the city in order to be able to do some of that education. So, I'm not sure what happened in this case. But to answer Commissioner Kirk and Ms. Thompson's question, the fitness studio that is in there does exceed the 15%.
So, it would be a permitted but non-conforming use?
Correct, sir.
And they could not expand?
Correct.
And just in generalities, not asking specifics, but what industries or types of businesses are your other clients? They're not in fitness. Are they in a manufacturing or an assembly or?
One provides, I believe, veterinary supplies. So, it's completely different, not fitness-related.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Commissioner Mehdi?
A question related, Julie, related specifically, let's take this example of this other training facility that's in this building. Using that as an example, one question I had was, for any of these buildings that, let's say, are now part of, after this goes into effect, part of their building may be non-conforming. Let's say you have this boxing gym that is, you know, grandfathered in, so it's legally non-conforming. But then, you know, they, they move out and you're putting another boxing gym in. Do they get to, you know, like, at what point does, do you break it and say, "No, you can't keep non-conforming as long as it's the same specific use"? Or let's just say if they keep, always keep keeping that space as a gymnasium, doesn't matter what kind, boxing gym, training gym, you know, whatever, then it continues, you can keep doing that, but once you switch it back over to, let's say, industrial, you can't go back again. Can you, do you know exactly how that works for somebody like a building owner who might want to re-lease and/or that business gets sold? And now is under a different name, technically new tenant, but it's really they just, you know, bought over the business. They might have changed up some equipment, but it's technically a new tenant. Are they still grandfathered in?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that type of scenario would be governed by the non-conforming language in the city code, which very much mirrors the state statute regulations regarding non-conforming uses. So, what that language in essence says is that if a non-conforming use ceases to operate for, I believe it's six months, six months, then it is required, any new use is required to be conforming. So, to address Commissioner Mehdi's example, if there's a boxing studio or a gym, something that meets that gymnasium definition that's in operation and that use moves, goes out of business, whatever, that area could be re-leased by a tenant that also meets the gymnasium definition. But once there hasn't been a gymnasium use there for six months, they no longer could occupy that additional space as a gymnasium or a retail use.
I would suggest that maybe some comment about that specific statute should be provided to these building owners, especially, you know, if we're going through with these zoning letters. I think that would be great content to include in the zoning letter for the building owner, especially if they're trying to sell or just for their own good, to have that piece of paper that points that out, I think is helpful. I have a couple of the comments, but I'll leave that till.
Well, on that same topic, if the fitness center went out of business at Tags, the one next to us that we leased to, and Tags wanted to expand into that space if we could not fill it with a fitness studio, we then could not expand into that space? After six months?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in that scenario, if Tags wanted to expand into that space and you were still at the 50%, because in this conversation, we're assuming the language gets approved as presented. You could move into that space up to the 50% floor area. You could still rent space in the building to a fitness center, but at that point, you'd have to rent to them at a 15% of the gross floor area because that would be compliant with the retail limitation on the gross floor area allowable for retail space.
Couldn't she, though, if, as long as they expanded within six months of that space going dark, they don't get the benefit of that non-conforming use from the tenant going out and they take over the tenant's space? Let's say it's over 50% and they end up being 75%?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, because we're talking about two distinct uses, one would be a gymnasium use, one would be a retail use. That's why you would follow the limitations or square footage restrictions.
So, that this other tenant in that building is a retail use?
Correct.
And not a gymnasium?
Correct.
Okay, that's a distinction.
And if all our tenants moved out and Tags had 5,000 students that wanted to sign up for gymnastics, can we remodel our current building that we own to accommodate all gymnastics?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, based on the language that's proposed tonight, that would be addressed through a PUD waiver to request that the 50% gross floor area be increased to 100%, assuming, you know, that's the amount of space you want to occupy. So, there's still a way that that could be done. It requires review by the city in order to accomplish that.
So, that is a possibility?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you'd just come before us and say, "Here's my situation. I need a PUD now." And again, especially given things like you just mentioned with COVID and the area changing. I mean, I think we're all very reasonable here on these kinds of things. So, that's where personally, as we continue this discussion, I'm sort of sitting in between. I get these concerns, but at the same time, all it really means is then you'd have to go through a PUD if you wanted to make an exception, which happens a lot. And so, certainly doable.
We hope we have 5,000 kids that want to take gymnastics. That would be really great. But I want to thank you two for your time and appreciate you all listening to my concerns. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. All right, I don't believe there's anyone else that would like to speak, so I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make that motion to close the public hearing.
All right, motion, Commissioner Farrar, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kirk, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Farrar.
I would like to start out. I've been hearing a few things tonight, and I did listen to the meeting from two weeks ago that I wasn't able to attend. First of all, I like the fact that we're going out to define the word gymnasium, and I think that's a positive step and it offers some clarity in zoning. But this whole limitation on gymnasiums in this industrial district has me concerned for a variety of reasons. Most of the uses, and there's a variety of uses in an industrial district by design. It's a mixed-use district, to be honest. But just the name of the district, industrial, infers industrial uses. And there can be factories, which are high levels of employee density, and there can be bulk warehouse storage, which is fundamentally the primary use of a bulk warehouse building in an industrial district, which has an extremely low density of employees. And so, I think we're trying to impose our desire to keep employment high in an area that was strategically designed for low employment density in the industrial zoning in the first place. And if I come to understand, and I would like your clarification. zoning in the first place. And if I come to understand, and I would like your clarification on this, I think in the industrial zoning, we're actually limiting, are we not, the percentage of high-density office space in a warehouse to 50%? And so that we can't go past that, so why don't we instead relieve that bottleneck and allow these high-tech industrial buildings to further densify with more office space in lieu of holding that to 50%? And stop me if I'm wrong, please, I, I remember that being a, a cap on a number of buildings in the Golden Triangle area that, that I've been talking to landlords about before, and if there's a particular reason, I'd like to know that. But, but that seems to be a, a better tool to increase employee density. This seems to be an unnecessary burden on landlords, and I, I think if anything, in today's day and age, we should be encouraging fitness participation. And with our weather in Minnesota, indoor fitness seven months a year is mandatory. Unless you're a real go-getter on the outside, 30 degrees, I'm not that guy, 30 degrees. But, yeah, negative 30, exactly. But, but I think that maybe we're sending the wrong message on fitness participation as well nested in this. So I, I'm very uncomfortable telling people that a gymnasium can't be used in an industrial area. It's, it's a perfect building, the buildings need to be repurposed, it's, it's got tall ceilings to accommodate the use, and, and I was hoping that there could be other ways to keep employee density higher. But with that industrial bulk warehouse, low density already is 100% of a building can be that. That flies in the face of this, I think. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kirk, just, just to, to build on or to speak around the same issue that Commissioner Farr was talking about, the 50% number is, is what I'm, I'm hung up on. I, is, is there any basis in, you know, in data or in experience that says if we do this, we will encourage more manufacturing? In other words, are, are there other locations, other communities, other?
Circumstances.
Yeah, other jurisdictions that have such limitations or such rules that say, yeah, it's worked for us? And is that number 50%? Is that 60%? Is it 75? Is it 35? And, and so to me, to put, if, if this is truly an artificial limit that we've just said, well, 50% sounds good, it's half, that bothers me. If there is something that can support that, that says if we do this, then we would expect our manufacturing population to either maintain or increase, then I would have some sympathy for it. Still, I think Commissioner Farr has made some good comments that speak to maybe this being a little bit arbitrary on, on our part. And I don't know, so I'm kind of up in the air. But maybe the question is, is there any data or experience or, or specific things that we can relate to that say that 50% number is a common thing that's done in other jurisdictions and it works? Commissioner Mehdi?
I went Sunday and drove through the Golden Triangle, looking at all the buildings and the names on them and trying to judge, in my mind, the mix of employment versus the type of business. And there are all kinds of businesses over there, some of which are the type that might have 10 employees, some of which might have 100. You know, so when you look at something, we're, you know, singling out a gymnasium and saying, because it's potentially got a low employee base, it's not ideal for that area. And I struggle with that. You know, I, I look at that area and say, that, that actually is not a bad use. You know, there's also a number of vacancies over there. There's a number of lease signs, you know, for lease. So do we want a for-lease sign or do we want a gymnasium that's doing something for our community? And I think I am lying, I would look for a lot more data before I would be comfortable with something like this.
Commissioner Mehdi?
I think that the issue here is, what's kind of funky about this is we're getting caught in this like public policy discussion that's sort of blurring with a planning land use discussion. And we're not necessarily on the planning commission here to kind of form the public policy. And I think the question is if, let's say, the city leaders and city government are saying, for whatever reason, we want X percent, a certain area of the city devoted to industrial because XYZ, you know, the question is, are we going to argue with that or go ahead and help them execute that on a land use point? And just a quick story, you know, this isn't the first city, I, I, you know, I get everybody's comments, I totally agree with Ed and all of you guys, but I also know that this isn't the first city I've come across that has the same thought. And I think it's part of the urban planning, you know, world on, you know, making sure they still reserve a certain part of the city for, for every types of uses and specifically for manufacturing jobs, not necessarily even for like tech jobs and stuff, it's working class manufacturing jobs. And so it's the idea that keeping it like that's going to, going to help preserve space for those jobs, but at the end of the day, does it really result in more space? I don't know. But I've, I've been at, at another city in the Twin Cities where we're, we're trying to come in with a, with a retail development, grocery store shops, all this, into a quasi-industrial, right on the border, technically zoned industrial next to retail type area. And they said, right now, we're, we want to keep all the industrial space we have because we want to create manufacturing jobs. So we're not going to approve your development. And do you know what came in one month later? A self-storage facility that employs one person at this very large property. So yes, that can happen, and I get that concern, but I also get that, I mean, at some point, there is, you know, a reason for the city to say, this is how much we want to keep as industrial manufacturing. So is this a good policy to help keep, preserve that amount? Yes. But we're kind of sitting here questioning, how much should we preserve? Which I totally get that question too, and I'm totally on board with all these comments about this seems a little restrictive. So I don't know, Julie, if you have any more background on the driver here, the 50%, the whatever, but I think, you know, I, I'm sort of in between because we're accomplishing, you know, if that's the goal of the city, this, I think accomplishes it, and we still have that PUD option for all the landowners. Is that good enough? Or do we really think this is onerous? Because I to, again, I'm totally on board with, you know, but at some point, we can't just let every parcel in the city be any use under the sun. It's, it's just, you know, I'm sitting here going back and forth between how do you, how do you handle that?
Just a quick side comment. I, I think, Commissioner Mehdi, one of the, one of the things we can do particularly in this circumstance is just air these issues.
Yeah.
And so I, I think, I think there's a really healthy discussion, just to air the issues. And, and because we, we in fact, in the end, don't make the policy, we only advise on the policy. So I'm, I know the city council will be listening to us on this, just if nothing else, to hear, you know, the thoughts of a variety of people. Did you want, Commissioner Farr?
I just wanted maybe further articulate the point, now that we've kind of gone around the horn a number of times, I'm differentiating between regulating a secondary use in a district versus more fundamentally, let's regulate the primary uses in the district. This district happens to have a wide variety of employee density uses within the industrial zone. But for the primary use, that's, that would be more impactful in terms of raising employees. If you wanted to limit the percentage of bulk storage in a warehouse building, that would have a huge impact on the, on the Golden Triangle area. I would be against that proposal. Landlords would be up in arms about that. But that would be a tool to use, as opposed to trying to regulate a secondary use that is, is market-driven, but it isn't, I, I don't think that's an overwhelming problem, especially if the strategy is to add employees, I would work on the primary uses of the district. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Higgins?
I wonder if Julie has any other comment, because I did sense from some of the discussion that is in the papers we read, that there was an effort to look at what has happened in other cities. And I'm curious about whether any of the comments that have gone on thus far make you realize something about what you attempted to do and whether or not that's been more illustrative for your purposes, given what you know, which we have not had any confidence yet, that we're sure we're going down the right procedure to get this accomplished.
Mr. Chair, sorry. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so a, a couple of things. So staff did take a look at other communities in our region and how they address these types of uses. As you can imagine, they have different terminologies, not everybody's a gymnasium, some are recreation facilities, you know, some have a lot of different names. So there's a, a bit of analysis that goes into that as well, trying to find similar types of uses. There were two communities that did provide some limitations on those areas. One was Bloomington, and Bloomington was at 50% of the floor area in, for those types of uses, in a freeway district. So again, you know, there, it's maybe not an apples-to-apples comparison, but for instance, Bloomington did allow a similar, does allow a similar use in the industrial districts, commercial districts, and freeway district. And it does limit it to 50% in the freeway district. Hopkins as well provided a, a limitation in that certain uses such as karate, health clubs, and dance studios can't exceed 3,000 square feet. So it wasn't tied to a percentage of floor area, but just a overall gross area. So, you know, the other communities that we've looked at do allow those, these similar types of uses in the industrial district, not necessarily with a gross floor area or square footage requirement attached to it. You know, so listening to the, to the planning commission and your conversation, your action, you know, this evening or at a subsequent meeting, if, if it goes to that, to the city council certainly can reflect a different thought process that the commission may have from staff. If there is a different number or other data that is necessary, please communicate that back to staff. But you could certainly make a recommendation to the council as well with regard to the percentage if the commission reaches a consensus.
So, so follow Julie, there, when you're looking at the data, there is nothing to suggest that, the flip side of that, restricting it to 50% promoted some other growth in another sector?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I, I wouldn't say that the research got that detailed, you know, to be honest with you, because that is a, those are different questions than taking a look at what research staff did complete and taking a look at what existing uses are out in the Golden Triangle, you know, at this point, and other industrial areas. There's industrial properties along Martin Drive. We talked a couple of weeks ago about how that property or that area, rather, is guided for flex service, and there'll be a new zoning district coming forward to address that area. You know, there might be other industrial properties scattered throughout the city, but certainly not concentrated as they are in the Golden Triangle.
Quick question. Can you remind me now, is this 50% limitation that's being put into the code, because since I don't have the full right out in front of me, apply to indust, all industrial zone, a specific zone or just the Golden Triangle area? What are we, what does this apply to?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as proposed, it applies to all industrial zones. So it's not limited just to the Golden Triangle. If there was a, you know, if there's an industrial property up in the northwest corner of the city, it would apply to that industrial zone property as well.
I have one thing.
Commissioner?
The other thing that comes to my mind is, and this would be, you know, kind of a far-out situation, but, you know, if we're putting this limitation on each building and we're trying to say we want to create jobs, so we're going to limit it, well, let's say every building then can have 50% gym. So if we, if that many people want to come in and have gyms, in theory, every building, half of it could be a gym. And that kind of defeats the whole idea of trying to encourage, you know, more jobs in manufacturing, because in theory, there could still be a lot of gym space in that overall district. Again, kind of a far-fetched theory, but I just think that the, the 50% doesn't necessarily do what maybe we're, the, the goal of, that we're trying to achieve. I like the definition of a gymnasium. I think that's an important thing to have.
So I want to pick your brain then, and I agree, the definition, I think, isn't the issue, it's, it's how we apply it. Don't we have to, you know, if, if the goal is then to preserve the specifically industrial jobs, I mean, 50% is better than 0% at preserving, you know, the industrial space? So, so what are you saying? It should be more restrictive than 50%, you know, like?
It's a good question. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
That's the problem.
I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying the 50% is a, a good number either. And I just don't think it necessarily does what they're trying, what we're trying to achieve or what the, with the, I, I don't think it will, it's, I think it will limit building landlords. I don't think that it's the key factor in encouraging jobs, if that is coming across.
Well, and, and again, and maybe Julie can chime in, but I think the question is, is the goal here to, to increase jobs or to preserve the industrial jobs we have, i.e. the space that's, that Eden Prairie currently has dedicated to industrial? We're trying to preserve it and not let it be, let's say, taken over. And I don't mean that in a bad way by gymnasiums, but I think maybe, that might be the point of, of doing this. I'm not sure.
Julie?
Yeah, Mrs., but why is this coming up now? It's been 38 years and it's coming up in the middle of a pandemic when space is feeling smaller because of requirements for social distancing, et cetera?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the gymnasium, excuse me, the issue of a gymnasium definition has been on staff's radar for quite some time, because it is problematic in that it can be broadly interpreted. So it's been on our list of issues to address when the, when there was time to address them. As you know, the last couple of years, we've been very busy with the comprehensive plan process. And knowing that following the comprehensive plan process, it is typical to have a lot of, or a fair amount, I should say, of code amendments in order to implement the comprehensive plan. So even though staff identified this is something that needs to be fixed in the future, there wasn't a rush to do it prior to the comprehensive plan. Now that we're taking a look at, as you saw a couple of weeks ago, a whole host of code amendments, this was one of those items that was added to the list and said, okay, as we're working on these code amendments, now is the time to try and provide a definition for gymnasium, as well as, you know, address how that looks in the future, because there are problems in administering it and applying it consistently and equitably. So it's not, you know, certainly we were working on this prior to COVID, it was on our radar. And as more time has passed and we have more time to kind of group these amendments together and bring them forward to you, this code amendment fit in with some of the others that, you know, we've been working on more heartily, if you will, recently.
Is there any value to having a definition without the required conditions?
Pardon me, I'm.
Is there any value to having a definition of gymnasium without that required conditions?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if that is the purview of the planning commission to recommend approval of the definition, but not adopt the 50% language, that's certainly a recommendation that could be carried forward. In discussing this at a staff level, we also discuss timing and taking this forward to the city council, assuming that there might be some action out of planning commission. So the timing is a little bit to be determined as of yet, because as I mentioned, the flex service district impacts some of the industrial areas, I have Pioneer and also in the Martin Drive area. So at a staff level, we've discussed, you know, doing the outreach to the neighborhood, holding a public hearing, getting feedback from the planning commission. That may feed into some of the broader code amendments, and it might make sense to take other code amendments, you know, paired with gymnasium to the city council in the future. So depending on, you know, what your consensus is this evening or your direction, the, the timing wouldn't necessarily have to follow the typical process of planning commission and then a month later, city council.
And just as a reminder, so currently gymnasiums are allowed 100%, up to 100% of the buildings in industrial. So we're doing two things. One, define what is a gymnasium, which I think we all agree, so we do need that definition. But then- But then we're proposing changing 100% down to 50, and I think that's the question. Does anybody, I mean, I don't, I don't have any proposal. I guess I don't know.
I'll, I'll speak to my thought on that. It just clarified for me. I, I think we're, we're solving a problem that we don't, one, we're trying to solve a problem that I'm not sure we know how to solve, and two, I think the way we're trying to solve that problem right now, the 50% number, is, there's not enough information behind that for me to support that. So I think the definition is important, even if it's only a definition to be used in the future, but the limitation seems to be, and Carol, I hear your comment about the PUD, and that's a very important one, but do we need to involve a building owner in the cost and effort to go through the PUD process, which is more difficult? Are we, are we getting a big enough return on, on putting that limitation in to justify making business a little bit more onerous in Eden Prairie in this one circumstance? And my answer in my head right now is no. So I, I would support no, no limitation at this point in time. Doesn't mean that if we learn more in the future that we can't come back and change that.
You know, I think you're swaying me in your direction, because basically, it's not like, we're just not changing, it, it's not like we're going from zero to 50, it's just we're keep, we're keeping it at 100%. We're not going to restrict it, but that doesn't mean we can't change things down the road. And, and as we're talking here, I'm kind of wondering, again, as far as making a motion, we, we approve the definition, but then should we request city staff, you know, go back and explore if there's other ways? Like, I think, I think it might help to better define what it is we're trying, what the goal is specifically, in terms of job preservation, industrial job preservation, you know, just avoiding, you know, do we think there's too many gyms? Like, what's the problem? What are we trying? And then, then that might help us decide if the 50% of gyms is a good solution, or if there's different solutions of restricting other, expanding or restricting other types and ask the staff.
As Commissioner Farr has said, focusing more on the primary uses as, as maybe a more effective way to get to the, solve the problem that I think you're rightfully in saying. I'm not sure we all exactly understand what problem we're trying to solve right this second. I, I, I don't completely, or at least I don't understand how the solution we're proposing is going to really solve that problem. There might be a better way to do it. So, you know, for me, when in doubt, don't pass a law. You know, you don't need, if, if you don't know why you need a law, why pass it? And that's in a, in a, in a sense, what we're doing here.
I can make one more comment, and it's only about how unique the circumstances are where we are now. We're at a part where we don't understand what the outcome of the COVID dilemma is going to be like, what it's going to do to different parts of our zoning operations, what are happening to businesses and so forth. I mean, we've seen a lot already, but we really don't know in detail what we could be putting out there now, trying to make something more flexible and more encouraging for, for more industrial job development, but we don't really know yet. Or that's going to be, how it's going to originate, how it's going to succeed, and without putting some other things in, in place that could perhaps be more harmful, or at least cause more effort to get back to where they want to be in the future, so.
Some kind of hearing. Seems like we're in favor of amending 1102 definitions, but then nothing else at this point. So, and I don't know if we want to direct city staff to go do research. I think maybe you can go to city council, and they can decide if they want to.
Sure. Yeah.
Bring it back at some point.
I think that's clean.
Is that worth?
Cleaner that way.
Well, I'll, I'll take a cut at a motion. Move to recommend approval for the code amendment for gymnasiums focused on the definition of gymnasiums, but, but add no limit to total floor space area, or in other words, maintain the existing 100% total floor space area available for gymnasiums. And I don't know if I want, do I want to include the staff recommendations? I don't. So that would be the end of the motion.
Do you want to just be silent on that? Just say we recommend amending section 11.02 definitions as recommended by staff? Julie?
That's, that's very much simpler, so.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff understands that the recommendation, as proposed by Commissioner Kirk, would be only to address the definition and not to carry forward the required conditions portion that talks about the 50% limitation.
Let's use her words.
All right.
Yeah, I like those words.
All right, I have a motion for Commissioner Kirk rewritten by Julie. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that motion.
Commissioner Farr, with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
We are a philosophical crew, aren't we?
All right. We have another public hearing, two more, code amendment for lighting, request for amended city code, chapter 11 relating to site lighting. Julie, we take this one as well?
And I've got another PowerPoint presentation for you to talk about the lighting amendment. So the lighting amendment, as proposed this evening, is essentially a housekeeping matter. So there is language in the ordinance that talks about lighting standards. There is also additional language that by practice, staff incorporates into development agreements that address additional details. So staff is proposing this amendment in order to level the playing field between those two documents so that what is in practice actually is required by code. There are situations where some projects don't require a development agreement, and in those cases, then, lighting would not be held to the same standards that other properties would be. So I understand that, you know, right now, the code provides a lighting standards, a standard of half-a-foot candle at the property line. That's a current requirement, and it is proposed to be maintained in the additional language. Also maintaining the maximum pole height of 25 feet. Again, it's current practice, it's already in code. And maintaining lighting in parking lots located within parking islands. Again, another code requirement that the city visited in 2016 as a part of the design standards effort to require those lighting poles to be in a landscaped island. What the code does not include is discussion of cutoff, downcast, or recessed lighting for poles and walls, and addressing minimizing light spill onto adjacent properties. That is language that is currently included in the development agreement that staff is proposing to put in code so it can be applied to all properties throughout the community where it's a, where it's applicable. So at this point, staff is proposing the language as it is before you in your staff report. It's laid out in a little bit different form, in that format, rather than it is on this slide. This is intended to be just a, just an overview of that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Julie right away?
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this amendment, please do so now. Not seeing anyone. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Motion for Commissioner Marcos. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Mehdi. All those in favor, close the public hearing. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Discussion or questions for Julie? I went first last time, so somebody else can.
I'm looking at the architect in the room, so.
Commissioner Farr.
If you'll indulge me, Mr. Chair. Based on Julie's opening comments about the clarity between our different requirements here in zoning, it, it's really easy for me to fall into the trap of overspecifying something that maybe would be very prescriptive in the zoning ordinance. And yet, I also stand back very much as a consumer of the zoning ordinance and, and want, less is more. And I understand that we really don't have problems in the city with compliance with the lighting code. We're always getting good photometric plans, and so, so I, I want to take a step back. That said, maybe just a couple of comments that maybe could be woven in here, and, and some that maybe we want to avoid at this point. But I really like our injection of the clarification of downcast luminaires, both in the parking lot and on the building. That's a very important component of lighting, to avoid glare in your eyes by floodlighting that points out. So, as Julie said, that wasn't in there. That's, this is just a huge step right there. Nip that in the bud. Pole lights want to be on the same pole height, or the same pole heights throughout the project. And where they're in vulnerable areas like in parking lots or right next to parking lots by the curb, we architects put those poles on top of a three-foot-high concrete base for protection against bumpers. And so if it doesn't say that in the ordinance today, maybe in the future, I would like the recognition that it's the pole itself that would be a 25-foot pole. You can buy poles in five-foot increments, 20, 25, 30, 35, whatever. So, so I, I don't mind a 25-foot pole, but with the opportunity to also put it on a three-foot concrete base where warranted for protection, which would increase the fixture height to 28 feet in that particular instance, but that, I think, does a minor deviation that we should just allow. That, that's my opinion. So we don't have to tell the person then to use a 20-foot pole. That adds way too many poles and adds a lot of cost unnecessarily. I, I'm not quite convinced about the light spill of the glare off the property line, even though it's less than a half-foot candle, on our side and rear yard lines, where if one could envision, usually, again, we architects put the parking lot within the minimum setback to a side yard line. And in some zoning ordinances, that's 10 feet, some 15 or so. So within that 10 or 15 of green space, that's where we plant our light pole. And if you look up 25 feet, there's the light. So we can shield that light so that it points towards the direction of our property and our, and our parking lot, but when you stand right at the property line, on now the neighbor's property, and you look up, just like you can look up here, I can see that light bulb, because I'm so close to the property line. So maybe there's a, some flexibility in terms of being off-site and seeing the lamps. Maybe, maybe there's a free zone of 20 feet on that neighbor's property where, where sure, if they walk right up to their property line and, and look up, they're going to see your light fixture, but that's not, I don't think that's the spirit of what we're trying to regulate personally, unless I hear otherwise. So I, I think maybe just a little caution on those light poles that are very close to property lines, where we can still achieve the .5-foot candle, but we, we still may have the glare if you're right underneath it. I might need some clarity from staff as to the G on canopy lighting. There's all sorts of places where we would put a canopy. If it's a gas station canopy, maybe that, that's one conversation. If that's just a porch canopy, like a porch cochere or something like that into, into a hotel or an office building that's distanced from the property line, something decorative is usually called for there. Something hanging and decorative as a, as a little gem when you're walking towards the front door, and I think some, some relief should be given for those types of decorative fixtures. But again, there's probably three pages to get into the weeds here, which I don't think we're trying to pile on here. So, so I'm going to stop there, and those are my comments.
Commissioner Kirk, one comment, just to follow up on Commissioner Farr's thing. Maybe that free zone would be the setback area on, on the other property.
It's usually a landscaped yard anyway.
But the point I'm going to throw out here, which is maybe a little bit too philosophical, and if we don't want to address it, that's fine. But I, and, and maybe my more educated engineering and architecture friends can educate me a little bit. It's my belief that in, in the past 10 or 12 years, as we're moving to LED lighting, that we have, that, I hate to go this broad, but the society in general has, has profited by higher efficiency lighting and LEDs. We do not address anything about efficiency in lighting here. I, I think it's logical to think that most developers and most property owners want the most efficient possible lighting. Is that something that should be mentioned of this type of lighting or equivalent from an efficiency standpoint? To just back up, you know, Eden Prairie has a, an energy conservation program, and should we reinforce that somehow in talking about lighting? Or is that really not necessary because it's going to be done anyway, due to the, the logic that it, you know, the logic of the developer and the owner who wants lower electrical bills? So that's just kind of a question for the rest of the, I, I've been, I thought about this as we were talking about this two weeks ago, and it's just been rumbling around in my brain, and I don't know where I stand on it, because, again, you don't want to over, over-regulate, but efficiency is pretty darn important.
I want to tack on to that question, which, again, I, I think you're right in both regards. I think property owners and builders want it, because it does save money. But then the secondary question is, if, if we do want to regulate that and, and require or have something about LEDs, should it go in here? Or would it be better to go in the, like, sustainability design standards somewhere in the code? And so that's more of a question, maybe, I don't know if Julie has any, knows offhand where we'd want it, but that's the second question. If we, if we mention it, where should that go?
Good, good comment. Mr. Chair?
Just to maybe follow up on Commissioner Kirk's comment there. Trains left the station on that. Everything we do is LED. It's, it's, I haven't found a client in the last three years where we deviate from LED lighting. So the market's driving that already. I can't say that in seven more years, there's going to be that next new technology, and then we'll all jump on that bandwagon. But as costs have come down over the last five years, it's now affordable, sustainable, and it's the right thing to do. I, I believe Julie's going to tell us that our design guidelines publication that she worked so hard on two years ago, has some good prompting narratives for sustainability in lighting and a variety of other techniques in design. But I, I don't think we'll ever see again another development come through where they're asking us to put in metal high light, or high-pressure sodium, low-pressure sodium, or mercury vapor lighting.
That's great to hear. Julie?
Chair, members of the commission, ditto what Commissioner Farr said.
Okay.
On all accounts. It is in the design guidelines to incentivize sustainable measures. LED lighting and other energy-efficient lighting, lighting alternatives are all included in that document as consideration for offsetting waivers and things of that sort, and agreed with Commissioner Farr in that I can't even recall the last project that came in that did not already include LED lighting.
Then let's not over-regulate. If it's, if it's a, a done deal, then it's a done deal.
Julie, do you know what the intent was with B? Was it the pole height itself? Was capped at 25 feet irrespective of a base?
Mr. Chair.
Back to Commissioner Farr's earlier comment.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, with regard to the three-foot bumper, so with the, with the requirement that all parking lot lighting be installed in an island, that somewhat addresses the need for the parking lot, or for the bumper, the three-foot base, if you will. Taking, taking a look at the recent developments that have come through the process, since we've required that the lighting poles be located in an island or in the area outside of the parking lot, that issue has not come up. So the language that you have here is intended to address that from grade standard. I understand what Commissioner Farr is saying in that there are some instances, existing conditions, where we do have parking lot lighting not in an island, and it's on a three-foot base. Something to consider, I think, with that is that if we provide that option, I think we are going to be very less likely to get parking lot lighting in a landscaped island, because folks will choose to. likely to get parking lot lighting in a landscaped island because folks will choose to utilize the three-foot bumper instead if that language provides an either-or option. But again, that is, you know, certainly up to the purview of the planning commission and city council through this process.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can just comment, that's great. I don't know how much study was done to marry up the parking part of our zoning ordinance, which talks about landscape islands in parking lots, the frequency of them, specifically that dimensional spacing. I think it's called out in units of number of stalls. Is it 20 stalls?
Correct.
So, okay, 20 times 9, 180 feet. I can do that as an architect. And 180 feet is too far away for 25-foot light poles, period. So, that means that when I go to do a site plan and I'm reading on my parking lot design and I lay out all my islands, and then later, buried on page 437B of the zoning ordinance, I find out that my stupid light poles have to be in another island. Now, I'm adding islands, I'm losing parking, and it's an inconvenient place for me to read that at the wrong place in my design. That's maybe whining on my job description. I'm sorry. But nonetheless, if we're going to say, put a light in an island, then let's make sure we have islands to put them in. That would be my, as a consumer of the zoning ordinance, that would be my recommendation. Yeah. And we didn't talk about whether or not this is applicable to all zones. We can take our, obviously, Eden Prairie Center, where you have a sea of asphalt and we're up at 60-foot-high poles. And that may make sense for that scale of parking lot. Otherwise, it would be a timber forest. If we had 25-foot poles in there, we'd have 4,000 light poles. So, I think it makes sense. So, I don't know what accommodation we're making in different zones for this. In an ordinary commercial, retail, industrial district, this is fine. So, maybe there's a couple of questions hidden in there. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I can just ask some questions, turn the table a little bit here because I want to make sure I understand Commissioner Farr's comment. Is Commissioner Farr recommending or suggesting that the three-foot base be added in the parking island so that the, no, okay, I just want to make sure I'm following along.
No. I would like to relax the requirement that all light poles within a parking lot must be in an island. That requires more islands than what we are prescribing in the parking design standard of our zoning ordinance.
I think that's a good point. It's kind of creating an additional need for islands. And I mean, I get what you're saying. A site planning, I mean, it could totally, totally throw off the whole thing if all of a sudden you realize
Right.
you have to add a whole ton of islands for all these light fixtures and lose stalls everywhere.
Right.
And have way more, then you end up with way more islands than the, and there's a minimum island size that we have to, you're going to end up with more islands than you should need normally.
Correct. And even though we can put low plantings in the islands, like shrubbery or low ornamental trees, a larger overstory tree would shield that light, unfortunately, later when the tree grows to maturity. And the landscape architects like to plant large overstory trees in parking lot islands so that they provide shade to the hot asphalt for other sustainability purposes, the heat island effect. And so, we have a couple competing things going on there with heat island effect versus location of light fixtures. So, I don't find it undesirable, maybe this is the key point, I don't find it undesirable to plant a light pole on a concrete base within a parking lot without it being in an island. I don't think that's undesirable.
We have a few right here in the city parking lot because I parked right next to it outside. So, you don't even think twice about it as a consumer.
Right.
Okay, so, did you have any proposals for B? Are you okay with B? And want a separate discussion about islands at some point, Commissioner Farr? I'm just, I'm going through the
Sure.
discussion points you brought up.
Okay, great. Hearing no other feedback from anyone, if I was to create a motion, I'm not ready to yet, I would certainly maintain A about the half-foot candle. I'm okay with B, adding the point about, or 28 feet when mounted on a three-foot-high maximum concrete base. I would recommend that language be added to B. I would, I would do away with C, or I would do away with C. D, I think is fine. E is fine. F is fine. G, I was asking questions about, I don't know if I got an answer, but that's fine, on just the whole, what, where are we going with that whole canopy thing? So, and then what's not listed here is that all districts, well, it says up the top, all districts. And so, I didn't know if there was a special case where we could make exemptions for, like, the mall. I forget what district that's in. But if that will become nonconforming compliant right now, should we make accommodation for that?
Building off of, trying to get to some specificity in the language, I agree with everything. And I think that your point on the canopy, when you have like a portico chair, you know, drive over at a hotel or something, you might have a chandelier, an outdoor chandelier or something hanging. So, what's, just off the top of my head, I can't think of what's a simple way to address, you know, unless it's a decorative hanging fixture, or maybe that's then too specific. But how do we propose changes to G?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Sheldon.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Julie, again, without going into great specificity on a lot of other lighting issues that we could go into, is there, is there the opportunity to talk further on other code language about lighting in the future? Like, are we, are we already restricting, you know, blinking, flashing, spinning, you know, rotating sign lights, things like that, that aren't in here, these five things, but I'm assuming they're buried somewhere in the ordinance? Just because I haven't taken a global look on it, just there's probably other things like that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there are certainly other lighting standards in the ordinance, particularly getting to Commissioner Farr's comment, particularly in the sign ordinance, because that's where we talk about flashing lights and spinning lights and dynamic displays, if you will, and provide a little more clarity in those areas. This portion of the code is intended to address building lighting and site lighting in the parking lot, not necessarily lighting as a part of signage. So, to answer some of the questions with regard to the last item, the canopy lighting, that, the intent behind that language was largely to address things like balcony lights out on, you know, four, five-story apartment buildings. So, if you've got that facing a single-family residential neighborhood, making sure that that light is tucked up, if you will, into the ceiling rather than being down and much more exposed and/or emitting more light, gas station canopies, you know, those types of things are what the intent was. I certainly understand the comment about decorative lighting. And I think if that's something that the commission is interested in, there could be additional opportunity to look at lighting on a broader scale throughout the ordinance, if there are other issues that need to be addressed.
Okay. And may I ask, Julie, I'm sorry, I don't know if we had the finality on the discussion about the light poles that are close to the property line on item number E, where the bulbs should not be burned in view of adjacent property or public right-of-way. Again, that sounds good, but I believe it was Commissioner Kirk who suggested that maybe we limit that to past the setback line of that adjacent property or something like that. Is that a reasonable request?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think that's a reasonable request. I believe that is consistent with the spirit and intent of the language. The language didn't necessarily contemplate someone standing directly beneath a light fixture. The intent was to make sure that the bulb or the fixture itself was covered with some kind of casing or shield feature, if you will, rather than just having a bare bulb exposed. With regard to Commissioner Farr's questions about the mall, I apologize, in my previous comments, I didn't circle back to those. So, Eden Prairie Mall, through their PUD process, received waivers to address lighting because it is a bit of a different situation than a standard, you know, office building or a smaller commercial venue. So, that's how lighting was addressed with that property.
Julie, what are your thoughts, just want to give you an opportunity to respond, what are your thoughts about the, or 20-foot language if on a base? Do you have concerns about that? Addition of that language, and that would be B?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if that is the wish of the commission to strike C and add that language about the 20-foot eight height in B, I think that is clear and consistent direction to the consumers of our zoning ordinance.
Can you set it with eliminating C? I heard you right?
Correct, correct.
And the setback language you felt comfortable with in E?
Yep.
If there's language?
Yep.
Language around the intent of canopy in G?
I don't know if I'd propose that.
That's a minor item. If we can insert something great with some kind of interpretation of decorative lighting or something like that.
And may, do we limit it to, like, entryway lighting so that things like on balconies, you can't have, you know, they say, oh, we want decorative lighting on balconies. It's like, no, that's not the point. It's just like entryway.
Yeah, at the discretion of
I don't know if that's too specific, too.
Were we allowed to add discretion? Do you have discretion?
Chair members of the commission, discretion is a finicky word.
Yes. So, she likes it. Sorry. Gives her gray hair.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Are there, more on the canopy discussion?
No, I was just going to ask Mr. Chairman of procedurally, have we opened and closed the public hearing on this?
I think I closed it.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there any other concerns or comments from other commissioners on these amendments as well? And then I would also just propose is, if there's no timeline on this, would you prefer to work on some language on each of these items and bring it back clean? Or do we want to go through? So, it's two things, I guess. First, does any commissioners have any concerns or other things to bring up? Commissioner Goody?
Just, I have only caught a little bit of what was said. So, it's, you know, we're not hearing too well down here, at least I'm not.
Oh.
So, it's, I'm not sure what all transpired in that discussion.
Oh, that's, all right.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to try and just summarize what I think it would be included if I made a motion?
Sure. Can you hear, can you, Commissioner Farr?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, on the staff report, under proposed code language, there's items A through G. And we're going to keep A. B, we're going to add the opportunity to put 25-foot poles on a maximum three-foot-high concrete base. We're going to strike C. D, we're going to keep as written. E, we're going to add to it that instead of it just being not permitted in view of adjacent property or public right-of-way, there's a setback zone on the adjacent property where that doesn't apply. We're going to keep F. And G, we're going to allow for some decorative lighting under canopies at building entries. And I'd like to insert some kind of an adjective in there, like undesirable. What would be a good adjective? Can't say glare-free because the lamps might be exposed. I need a thesaurus. Okay, we'll do
Julie?
So, did you understand all those?
Oh, yeah.
Did you hear those? Thank you.
Julie?
What's the Commissioner Farr restate? Comments on G, as in goat?
G, yes. So, as written, except decorative lighting under canopies at building entries.
Julie, are you concerned about the number of those changes?
Mr. Chair, members
Do you want to discuss?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I don't have any additional questions, and staff can certainly work to incorporate language reflecting the spirit and intent of what the commission has discussed as a part of those items.
Okay, great.
Can I ask one, Claire?
Yes.
Claire, something on B, when we're saying that we will allow the three-foot bases, that goes hand-in-hand with the requirement still of having some island for the parking requirements, correct? We're not saying that we can do bases. I guess there's still a parking requirement that's not part of this, that's requiring islands with light fixtures. So, this would just be to work with that to allow for more lighting in the space. We're not replacing, we're not saying we can, you can have lighting on bases and not have islands.
Correct.
Okay.
That's not the intent of
Right. I just want to make sure.
My suggestion, that's correct. And I think we all agree that there's a parking island requirement clearly called out in the parking lot part of our zoning ordinance.
Yeah. I just want to make that clarification. Okay.
Further discussion or concerns or?
Just so I'm clear, are we saying that staff's going to work on redrafting this and we come back to vote? Are we, are we going to make a motion?
We're going to make a motion.
Okay.
I think we have a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Farr.
Let me get to the right one. There it is. I would like to make a motion to recommend approval for the code amendment for lighting based upon recommendations from the staff report dated September 28, 2020 with the following changes. Under items A through G of the staff report, under lighting, a full acceptance of A, modify B to include a 25-foot pole on top of a three-foot-high maximum concrete base. The elimination of sub-paragraph C in its entirety. Retaining paragraph D. Clarifying in sub-paragraph E that the view of, on adjacent properties of lamps be exempt in that adjacent property's setback zone. If we need to clarify parking versus building setback, I would clarify that to be building setback line. Sub-paragraph F would remain in its entirety. Sub-paragraph G would have the additive phrase at the end, except decorative lighting at building entries.
I have a motion from Commissioner Farr. Do I have a second as amended? Motion as amended. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Commissioner Toomey, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Julie, you want to tackle one more?
Yes, sir.
Did you save the most controversial for last?
Hope not.
We have a code amendment for towers and antennas. This is a request for amended City Code, Chapter 11, Section 11 dot 06, to comply with recent Federal Communication Commission ruling. Julie?
So, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I do have another PowerPoint for you. The PowerPoint goes into a lot of background detail to kind of set the stage for why we're here this evening. The city, the Federal Communication Act of 1996 established that towers and antennas are permitted use in all cities and that they cannot be discriminated against by zoning district. So, back in 1996, the city did draft and include in its ordinance the section called Towers and Antennas that adopted all of the regulations enforcing the FCC Act. In 2012, the Spectrum Act was established that local governments are required to approve certain requests to modify existing wireless structures. When that change was made in 2012, our legal counsel took a look at our code and said every everything's in compliance, there's no need to add further language or further clarification, everything meets the standard. So there were no code amendments that were done in 2012 as a part of that Spectrum Act. However, in June of this year, the FCC did approve a declaratory ruling related to that Spectrum Act. And the purpose of that ruling is largely to promote equitable telecommunications service in all communities throughout the nation, as well as streamline review processes within jurisdictions. As you can imagine, different jurisdictions have different processes, and that's, I would assume, challenging for the telecommunications industry to work through. So as a part of this ruling that occurred in June, our city attorney took a look at our language in the ordinance, compared it against that ruling, and is suggesting the language that is in your staff report be adopted and included in code. This declaratory ruling provides criteria about what constitutes an eligible facilities request and basically states that local governments are required to approve requests that meet the eligible facilities request. So there are certain criteria, it's just not, you know, a wide open situation, you have to meet those criteria in order to be an eligible facility. So an eligible facility request is a modification of an existing tower or base that does not substantially change physical dimensions involving colocation of new transmission equipment, removal of transmission equipment, replacement of transmission equipment, and eligible facilities do not include establishment of new wireless towers. So a new wireless tower would still have to go through the process that we currently have in code. So the language basically states that as a part of eligible facilities, those modifications do not substantially change the physical dimensions of the tower, allowing tower height to be increased by 10% or a maximum of 20 feet from the existing antenna, and also addresses some ground base equipment that supports the overall, excuse me, tower facilities, and also includes a 60-day shot clock from the time that an application is submitted. So again, streamlining that review process and providing consistency across jurisdictions. So while that declaratory ruling that came out in June is not inconsistent with current city code and our current administrative approval practice because we handle those types of requests at a staff level, upon review, our city attorney felt it was worthwhile to include this language in chapter 11 in order to recognize and support that ruling and answer, proactively answer any questions of the telecommunications folks that we work with when they take a look at our code. So right now, there's 13 provisions in the Towers and Antenna section. Staff is not proposing any changes to the existing language. We are proposing that a 14th subdivision be added that provides an acknowledgement of that June 2020 ruling and identifies the criteria for the eligible facilities request as it's shown in your staff report. So we do recommend approval of that as it is presented, and I'm, do my best to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Julie. Just an initial question. Trying to remember what exactly it was, but we reviewed in a request at the high school. Would that have not come here with these changes?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that still would have come before you because as I recall that request, it was to build a new tower.
Was it a new tower?
And they were looking to exceed the height requirement beyond what code allows. So I believe they got a waiver or a variance to address that. At least that's how I'm recalling it in the moment.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? Commissioner Mitty?
I have one, Julie. It just wasn't clear to me in the, in the sexual write-up on the staff report that we're looking at, is where this section 14 ends? Does it go all the way, is the text that's actually getting added all the way down to the staff recommendation section, or is it just that A, B, C, and ends after the C? I just wasn't sure if those were additional, like internal comments, or that was actually part of the language being added.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it's A, B, and C, the additional language below that, but before the staff recommendation is context for the commission.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak regarding this proposal, please do so now. Not seeing anyone, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Motion from Commissioner Higgins, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mitty, you have a second. All those in favor closing public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Discussion? Questions, concerns? Pass. All right. Not seeing any. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Kirk. Move to recommend approval for the code amendment for chapter 11, section 11.06, Towers and Antennas, based on the recommendation from the staff report dated September 23, 2020.
All right, a motion for Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second for Commissioner Gooding? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? All right, passes. Next up, any planners' reports this evening? No. Any members' reports? Entertaining motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
All right, do I have a second? Commissioner Toomey, a second. All right, all those in favor adjourn the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Well, I don't, I thought I said, I should get out here and sit down here, but that, I think it's like, really, so. Yeah, I mean, you put it there, or why you go back and you go in there, otherwise it's this year, there's a lot of years.